I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the Public Safety and Human Services Committee meeting, held on Tuesday, April 16th, commencing at 4:31 PM. Council members in attendance are Council President Kritzer, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Noeva Camina, and Councilmember Fields, and myself, Councilmember Salahuddin. There are four items on the agenda. The first item is the Fire Department EMS Transport Fee Program. So we will go ahead and get started with that. This will be led by, I believe, Fire Chief Shepherd.
This will be Deputy Chief Mike De Spain.
Thank you.
Yeah, good afternoon. Everybody can hear me okay? My apologies, the chief is out of the country and I am out of state, but we're trying to hold this together. You have a packet, and before you today is basically just a quick overview of our basic life support transport program. These are the aid cars. The background is basically pretty simple. Pretty much the rest of the United States, all of King County, charges for their basic life support transports. We do not, we're the last agency standing that doesn't do that. So there are ways to set up these programs to where there's little to no impact, again, to the local taxpayer, so we just want to explore that in the hopes that we could probably set up a similar program here and basically just come into alignment with the rest of the county and the region. So right now, there are, under goals, there are well-established state and federal funding sources that help close that public safety gap, and that's one of the issues we're kind of dealing with here in Redmond, to lessen the burden on local taxpayers. If we do get a program like this, it does help with sustainability of our EMS program, especially as we consider the rapid population growth we're seeing and the rising demand for service, especially for EMS services. And then again, we would propose to implement a program that aligns with all the other fire-based EMS transport providers in King County and actually nationwide. When you look at fees, remember the local taxpayer pays a small EMS levy every year, and that's kind of the readiness model. That is to make sure everything's in place, ready to go. If, we currently do not charge for a basic life support transport, that's free. What we can do legally is we can bill for those services to private insurance, Medicaid, Medicare, private pay, and then recoup those costs to help sustain the program over long term. And then what we can do is just set up through legislation through council is to set up a program where non-resident of Redmond would, you know, pay the full amount if the bill wasn't completely paid. For residents, the model in the region is that agencies that provide service to their residents, they just write off the difference. So what happens is the medical insurance would go to the bill, bill would go to their private insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, and then whatever's not paid, we just write it off, so the patient never really gets a bill. In Washington State, we have Medicaid expansion, and with that is the Ground Emergency Medical Transport Program. We call it GEMT, and GEMT basically, in short, is just a way for publicly-owned ambulance providers like the Fire Department. It allows us to get a little extra money for Medicaid and Medicare programs within the state that in most country, in most areas, that states that don't have this program, their EMS systems are a little more in trouble here. We're fortunate that we have this program in place, which pays a pretty fair share. It doesn't pay at all, but it pays a more fair share. When we look at neighboring jurisdictions, their typical charge for a BLS transport is somewhere between about $840 for the base fee, up to about $1,100. What we've done as far as our estimates of revenue, if we were to pursue this, is just look at a blending of Bellevue and Kirkland, which would put us at about $900, $995. We transport just over 1,000 transports per year, so that would gross about $1 million. With that, there's a collection rate, some people we may not collect from, there's some costs to administer the program, but we're fairly confident we would net out about $788,000 using 2024 data. And that's for a full year, so if we did implement this sooner, it'd be a little bit less for this fiscal year, a little bit more for the next, but about seven, let's call it 800,000, just using round numbers, is about what we would anticipate making. And then, kind of, if you look at arguments for pursuing this, one is, it's about, like I said, about $800,000 in additional revenue annually to help support that public safety funding gap. Redmond is the only fire department in King County that does not charge for BLS transport. And then, to a certain extent, insurance companies and the federal government, they have programs that pay for this. When we don't charge them, we're kind of subsidizing the private insurance companies and, to a certain extent, maybe the federal government. And if we look at maybe the cons, just to make sure the argument is well-balanced, some arguments are the taxpayers already paying for a portion of the service through taxes and the levy, and we would say, yes, that is true, but it does not cover all the costs for our EMS BLS transport system. So right now, the general fund is essentially subsidizing a portion of that, and again, the state and federal government offered to pay their fair share, so that's one of the side arguments. And then, there should be some concern over patients' ability to pay. Some patients have, they wouldn't necessarily get the bill, but their insurance company would get the bill. They might get a copay. That's not a bill from us, that's an agreement between them and their insurance provider. There's really no one that doesn't have insurance. If someone wasn't, didn't have insurance at the moment of transport, as soon as they go to the hospital, they get enrolled into at least Medicaid, if not Medicare. And then, one of the other arguments might be that the unit hour utilization, which is how long an ambulance is tied up, we anticipate will increase slightly, because when they get to the hospital, there is a little bit of extra time they need. There's about four or five pieces of information they need to gather to bill. Now, we're not going to make the unit stay out of service just for the bill. If we're busy and there's other things going on operationally, we'll pull them out and we'll solve it later, but that could be one of the issues. And then, just kind of rounding this out, our recommendation is that we explore bringing this back in a, maybe a deeper discussion to council at a study session. Right now, we have it tentatively scheduled for May 14th, and we can obviously go a little bit deeper then, but I'm happy to answer any questions the council has now.
Thank you so much, Deputy Chief De Spain. Really quick question. In our agenda, we had the requested action for this to go to consent on May 7th. Is that not the case?
I believe we were scheduled to take this to a study session on the 14th, is probably the next best info, and part of that reason would be there are some things that we need, council, to explore deeper on write-off timing and write-off policies. And Chief, Chief Ami, are you on there?
Yeah, I am. I had raised my hand. Yeah, so we had, when we spoke with this, with the executive team, it was anticipated that you all would have additional questions for us. And so what we were hoping tonight was that, now that you've had an opportunity to get an introduction to the plan, kind of review some of the documents that we've attached, we're open to hearing what other things you may want us to go a little bit deeper in. And while a consent agenda would be fabulous, we are under no illusions that we can just go straight to consent without a discussion, and so we're also prepared to go to the study session and then be able to address any concerns or questions that you may have that have evolved since you've had a chance to look at and hear what Chief De Spain's presented tonight.
No, I really appreciate that. I think our recommendation would be to go to the study session, just want to make that clarification clear. I will pass it to the rest of council if they have any questions right now, but knowing that we also have a pretty packed agenda, if there are questions ahead of that study session that council wants to send over to the team, please do so offline, and then we'll hopefully learn more at the study session. Any questions right now? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I'm really glad that we're going to get that study session. I'm looking forward to hearing more. And I would like, when we hear on the 14th of May, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the experience for residents. I understand we're going from a no-bill system to some kind of bill system, and we all know that those can be headaches, and who will be most impacted by that, and what will be the supports offered, those kinds of things. So that experience, and also, any work that's being done to gather public input. Obviously, we're having this conversation live today, so the council will start to receive some feedback from the public, but if there are any particular community groups or advisory committees or the like here in the city of Redmond that you're also gathering feedback from, it'd be helpful to know who that is and how that's happening. Thanks.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I do have a bunch of questions, so I will definitely email those in, but just wanted to say for the record, when council leadership discussed this item coming forward, I made the comment that I was going to be a hard sell on this, and the proposed option that you brought forward, I think I can get behind. I do have some further questions, but I understand that we are in a situation where our public safety funding is in need of more support, and we are the only community in King County that does not have some sort of billing for insurance and Medicare and Medicaid for transport. So I appreciate the efforts that you put in and bringing forward the list of options, and look forward to further discussion. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields?
Thanks. So have you talked with the insurance companies, and do they have a reaction to this?
We have not talked to them yet, council member, but what the study session will line out, kind of, all of our steps moving forward, and one is community outreach, so there's some communications that we would do. Part of that also is negotiating those contracts with the private insurance companies, but remember, we're the only ones left in the state that don't do it, so we would pretty much just align with the contracts that are already in place with the rest of the state.
Understand. We'll still want to be interested in what they say and what their likely reaction is with their subscribers, with the people who they insure, or their reaction to the subscribers. In other words, are we, has there any evidence that insurance companies, once this happens, when they write policies, they exclude or don't cover those costs all of a sudden? So you have experience with other jurisdictions, so I'm sure you have the answers. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Council President Kritzer?
Thank you so much for the presentation and for looking into this, bringing it for us to consider. I'll look forward to the study session. I think I would echo some of my colleagues' comments in terms of what I would love to see. I love this flow chart that you attached, and it would be great in the study session to be able to kind of walk through, per Councilmember Stewart's comment about being able to understand the experience of people who might have all different types of insurance or no insurance, so that we can understand who might be impacted, especially since this is following a moment in which people will have been in an emergency situation and have a lot of things to deal with in their lives, so I think we do want to be thoughtful about this, and again, engage our public on this. But I'll look forward to hearing more about that, and in particular, kind of, the idea of who actually would likely pay for this and who wouldn't. I think having some of that clarification, you have it in your slides, but being able to dive into that during the study session will be very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Great. We will go ahead and look forward to this on the May, I believe it's May 14th meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The next item is the approval of two-year contract with Force Metrics, and we have Police Chief Daryl Lowe.
Good afternoon. So this is the Force Metrics contract that we've talked about a couple times. Most recently was the study session last Tuesday night about the police technology. So the ask is that it be moved to consent on the May 7th agenda, please.
Council, any questions? We've touched base on this a few times, as Chief Lowe mentioned. Hopefully, if there were any questions offline, they were addressed, but I'll pass it to Councilmember Fields.
So we talked about, at the study session, a touch with council before you do the extension, or the option. And the mayor thought that that was automatic, but you weren't certain. When I read the packet and read the contract, it looks like after a year, anybody, either party, can walk away from this agreement.
Correct.
With no, I mean, it's no fault or whatever. You just say, hey, have a nice day, and...
Correct. There's no penalty or consequence for termination of the contract, and then, based on council's requests, we will be utilizing this particular software and platform to provide updates to council, so you'll have multiple touches throughout the year to see the performance and the information.
What I would like to see specifically is after that year and before the end of the second year, and maybe an 18-month benchmark, that you come back and provide a really good summary of the risks that were identified, how were those addressed, were they mitigated, and also the benefits, did you achieve the benefits? And I think that's fair to say, after 18 months, that council would then have an option to say, it's not working like you thought, or hey, great, let's go for the five years. So that's what I would like to see. I don't know how to put that in, other than my request, I don't know how to put that in stone, but I would like to see it.
Done. My captain's taking note of it, and we will come back to you at 18 months with a summary update. And like I said, we intend to utilize this to provide the statistical information in our quarterly report, so you will get multiple touches.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Noeva Camina?
Hi, Chief. Thanks for bringing this forward. I recall on this memo that we're looking at $120,000 over a two-year period. I was just looking for what the costs were originally, because I recall that there was going to be a price reduction in the first year that was going to be significant, but looking at the difference in cost between the first time that we saw this and now.
So the first year, there's a essentially $80,000 discount in the first year, so about a 55% discount in the first year. The second year is $75,000, and then the first contract that you saw was originally for the five years, so it was amortized out over the five years. With this particular one, what we are essentially agreeing to is the two-year contract with the option to renew, so that's why those dollar amounts are not enumerated in this particular memo, because there's no guarantee that we will go beyond year two.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I think this is good to go to consent on May 7th, with the addition of that 18-month benchmark as well. Perfect. Thank you. And the next item is also from Chief Lowe, Redmond Police Department Quarterly Police Activity Update.
Yes, and so this is our quarterly report for the first quarter for 2024. Next slide. So you guys had it in your packet, so we'll go through it fairly quickly, but for the, by viewing public and listening public, I'll call out some of the statistics that were included within the report. So what we saw was a 9.5% increase in calls for service annually, so that represents the total number of calls for service for last year. So we handled 30,853 calls total last year, which was up from 28,186 the year prior. It's typical, what we've seen over the last few years, is that each year, we see an increase, you know, in the number of calls for service, you know, for the police department. Overall, the crime report or the crime increase was 5.5% last year. This is very consistent with what is being seen in the region and from some of our neighboring cities, is varied by a couple percentage points. Some cities will report out 5.2, 5.3. This here is, I'll say, our information, the official numbers actually come out in late June, and that is put out by the State Chiefs and Sheriff's Association. I think I've shared with this council and with the public before. I believe it important to put this information out a bit more timely than, you know, June of the following year, because at that point, the information is about 18 months old. Now, what I will say is I'll hang an asterisk on it, because between now and June, the number may change, because as crimes get solved, that may affect the overall number. So come June, when the state puts out information, if they report, let's say, if we clear additional cases over the next couple months, and then the overall number becomes, you know, say 5.2 or 5.1, that's what will account for that anomaly, if that makes sense. Okay. Next slide. And then, in this quarter, thus far, we've seen about a 7.3% decrease in calls for service for quarter one. And obviously, that will change quarter to quarter, and like I said, we saw an increase overall last year, but thus far, we were seeing slightly less calls. And then also, the arrests for the first quarter are down, you know, 2.7%, that will, you know, average out over the course of the year. Auto thefts are down 15.7%, which obviously is a good thing for us, and also, always point out that one of the challenges we face is that our numbers are not very large, so two or three in either direction can have a significant statistical impact on the overall Residential burglaries are down 10%, and I'll focus on this for a little bit. What we saw within the East Side area over the last year and then the last quarter was a significant increase in residential burglaries in our residential neighborhoods. Here in Redmond, we did have that same experience. In Redmond, we have arrested individuals responsible for some of those burglaries, and in one case, we arrested the same individual multiple times. The law enforcement agencies from the East Side continue to work on these particular cases, and recently, the Kirkland Police Department arrested a number of individuals residing here in Redmond and also in California that were responsible for burglaries in their city. At this point in time, we have not connected that group to our burglaries, but again, the law enforcement agencies in the area continue to work, you know, this particular problem, and then what we've seen in this first quarter is, you know, is an actual decrease, so it is having an impact, you know, on that activity. Shoplifts have increased by, you know, 5%. That is probably one of the more frequent and prolific crimes that we experience, not just here in Redmond, but within the region, and, you know, as a result of some of the lax laws and individuals not being remanded in custody for, you know, some of these property crimes contributes to that increase in what we see. We continue to see individuals going into some of our big-box stores, loading up shopping carts and fling. We still see individuals ramming our police cars and fling from our officers, so that continues to be a problem and a challenge, not just here in Redmond, but for law enforcement here as a whole. Traffic collisions have increased by 3.3%, and this is one of those cases where, in this particular case, the number is a little bit larger. What we do from an enforcement and prevention perspective, when we see these particular locations, we have emphasis patrols specifically in those locations. We use our electronic message boards in that location to remind individuals to slow down, and then, as we discussed last Tuesday night, in that particular study session, we will be implementing the Speed Zone enforcement cameras around the schools and the parks to help with our overall traffic safety approach. And then, overall, property crimes are down 8.8%. Violent crimes are up 3.7%, but here's one of those cases where we have the, I won't call it the air of small numbers, but I'll call it the impact of small numbers. It went from 27 to 28, so it was one additional crime, but the 3.7% increase. One of the other things that we looked at, starting in the last quarter, it's called My90 Survey. So what this is, it's a survey tool that is sent out to individuals that utilize police services. So if a person has a call for service to the police department, they get this survey sent to them at the end of it, much like you, you know, when we go to stores, they always circle at the bottom, hey, please take our survey, let us know how we're doing. So we are looking at this particular device to get feedback from, if you want to call it our customers or our community that utilize our police services. Some of the questions that they ask is based on the interaction, how do you view the police department? I'll say overwhelmingly, the vast majority of folks, you know, view the police department well. They ask about the top safety concern within the community. What we see is about 40-plus percent want to see more, I'm sorry, I'm going to slide ahead of myself. The top safety concern within the community is theft from, you know, our residents. And then, what would they most like the department to do to improve community safety? About 40-plus percent want to see more, more police officers in the community. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Chief Lowe. Any questions? Council President Kritzer?
Thank you very much. And the data from My90 is very interesting. Look forward to continuing to track that and get more reports on it over time, so we can get a sense of that feedback. One thing that I didn't ask about during our police technology session the other week was about the StarChase program. Curious to hear how that's going, and in particular, how it's helping with any issues around pursuit, as you mentioned a little bit, especially around some of the theft that's happening at the big-box retail or other types of things.
So we still have StarChase, we're still utilizing it. I will make sure that we have an update on that when our second quarter report, I'll make sure we have a slide specifically to talk about it. We continue to utilize it, and like any technology, it is, it has its pluses and minuses. Without getting too far down the rabbit hole, some of the challenges with this particular technology is that the distance in which the officer has to get in proximity to the vehicle that's fling in order for us to have a successful deployment creates some challenges and issues for us, because you have a vehicle that is accelerating at a high rate of speed, you have an officer that is traveling at an equally high rate of speed in order to make this deployment, and if the vehicle is not in proper alignment, then you don't get a successful contact with it. So that's one of the feedback points, or one of the, I'll say, the downsides to it. When we have a successful deployment, it works as intended, the GPS coordinates activated, it's monitored from our dispatch center, the officers can completely back off, and then we track it remotely. So in theory, it works, the practical application of it has some challenges. We continue to work with the manufacturer of StarChase and others in that space to provide, I'll say, technical feedback and the end-user experience to help them make this product better, and then there are a number of other manufacturers that are coming out with pursuit intervention devices that we are having an active part of that conversation, an active part in that developmental conversation based upon our feedback for StarChase. The state is also providing additional grant money next year, which is how we got this funded. We will look to get some additional cars outfitted with StarChase, but they also have a handheld option, so we are going to explore the handheld option, because that will allow us to deploy this particular device before the vehicle goes in motion or as it goes in motion, so we think that that may have more positive outcomes than the current mobile application.
Any other questions from council? I'll do Council Vice President Forsyth?
Tried to hand it off to Mr. Fields. So thank you for the presentation. I noticed in the annual report that the traffic citations and the traffic collisions kind of do, one goes down and one goes up. Is there any potential correlation you see there, or is that just traffic getting back to normal and the normal traffic patterns reemerging?
I think it's more of the latter. I think we're just getting back into the normal, getting back into the new work environment with, you know, the remote work or not as many days, you know, physically coming to the office and utilizing the roads. The other part, too, is, at this point, I'm down to two motor officers, so the staffing part, too, is at this point, I'm down to two motor officers. So the staffing component also contributes to the number of citations, right? Obviously, the less officers specifically assigned to traffic enforcement, the less citations we're going to see. So as the staffing numbers increase and I'm able to add personnel to our traffic unit, I would expect to see, you know, a higher number of citations because, again, we have people, more staff specifically focused on traffic enforcement.
Okay. And then interested to know where mail theft and package theft falls into these categories? Is that's one of the things that I hear a lot about from community members?
So that would fall into the property crime category. And then I can say, anecdotally, I have not heard about, not that it is not occurring, but at least on the police side, we're not hearing about huge spikes in it. So there may be, I'll call them, you know, one-offs, or it may happen, you know, a bit more frequently. What I do know is in some of our new, larger apartment complexes, they have common mail areas. And so that's where we have seen some incidents, you know, reported in those specific locations.
Okay, thanks. And then lastly, you just, in your comments, mentioned that we will be implementing the traffic cameras. I recall during the last conversation that there's still more policy work to be done on that front, yes?
I guess, for you, I'm cautiously optimistic or hopeful that we will be implementing.
Just want to make sure we're clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yes. So going to your law of large numbers, or in this case, law of small numbers, based on what I just saw, it would be a mistake to project first quarter into the remaining part of the year, right? Because that's really not the busy time for crime. And when the sun comes out and people get busy, is that a fair statement that we shouldn't, you know, keep our fingers crossed that you will see reductions? But we shouldn't conclude that this first quarter is indicative. Is that, is that a fair thing to say?
Yes, that's a fair statement. I would say that the first quarter numbers wouldn't, I would not anticipate that to be reflective of what we will see throughout the year, in part primarily for what you said. We are coming into the busier, you know, part of the year, climate, weather, et cetera, yes.
Okay. And then second question, it's actually not a question, it's a very good suggestion. On your survey, I noticed that there was a lot of concern about theft and there was a lot of interest in more police officers in the field or in, on the beat or on the street. What was lacking in that survey question was, would you like to see more crimes solved and therefore more detectives? And I've made this suggestion to you in the past, that I think a big part of our crime prevention is if we can be proactive in solving the crimes, then we will likely see a reduction in crimes. So if you could add that to the survey and get the temperature of the people of the residents, I think that would be really informative.
Fair. But, and if, I'll counter, part of that, though, is our clearance rate is, I'll say, consistent or better than the average. The challenge that we have is, we can put the people in jail, but if they're not kept in jail and/or if they're not prosecuted, then, not that it doesn't make a difference, but it's more complicated than that. So yes, we will have the detectives. Yes, we do clear the crimes, but folks then need to be held accountable through the other parts of our system to have that true impact.
And I get it. And I think that's a fair pushback. But as Council Vice President Forsythe said, I hear a lot about property crime. I hear a lot. My son's car was broken into recently. Took his tennis bag, he found it four houses away. So I took an informal survey just in on my block, and there was at least four or five people who said, yeah, we've been broken into, our car's been burgled. So I think that there's a lot more out there. And if you are a victim of theft, it might be helpful to know just what you said, that the police are in fact caring about it. And they are trying to find the people, the perpetrators, and trying to solve it and prevent it. And if in fact, I'm not saying, I'm not arguing that you go out and try to turn people against the court system, but if they in fact know that law enforcement is doing their part, then at least they have an understanding and maybe we can move forward. So, thank you.
Agreed.
Great. So I have Councilmember Stewart, then Council President Kritzer, and then Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. And I appreciate you coming back, Chief, especially on this My 90, which is an Axon product. We just spoke last week about new technologies that the department is considering bringing on. And over the last couple of years, obviously, body worn cameras have come on. The My 90 survey is an Axon product. Star Chase, you know, that was another product mentioned earlier tonight. So it's great to hear feedback on how these are going. And we all live in the modern era where sometimes technology, you try it for a while, it doesn't solve what you need. And it's okay to move on from that product. I want us to be a learning organization here at the City of Redmond. But I did want to dig in a little bit on some of the data that we were able to see since last June on this. I got curious about what we're doing. Obviously, the data here is demonstrated to show when someone calls for service, how satisfied they are with the service that they do get from the police department. But there's a couple of things about how the responses, because it's A B, there's no free response, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, it's multiple choice, rather. So we're in community right now, having a lot of conversations about alternative crisis models and things that we might like to see our public safety staff do in the city. And the options here, to the question, what would you most like Redmond PD to do to improve safety in our community, many of the things that we've been discussing aren't listed here. So it's difficult to gather data on community interest in those. If the options are more or less of the existing police practices that we have here in the City of Redmond. So just a piece of feedback, if there are opportunities to collect that data so we can continue to have a more complete conversation in the future, that would be great.
Okay. And I will follow up then and see if the questions can be modified or changed. And I do know that there is free form comments that are available at the end. So if an individual wanted to speak to something that wasn't, that was not an option provided, they do have that ability because that is where we sometimes get additional information based on a previous anecdote, provide, you know, a report number and officer's name, some of that information. So that is available, but I will see about changing the questions or options.
Thank you. We'll actually go to Councilmember Noeva Kamina next.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Councilmember Stewart, because you basically asked the question that I was going to ask. And in addition to that was around the increase, we see the top two items for how residents would like Redmond PD to do to improve safety in the community as being increased patrol cart and increased community engagement. There's a lot of different ways to be engaged within the community, but has there started to be conversations about what that could look like?
Specifically, no, as far as from that feedback. You know, we have a number of community engagement programs that, you know, we provide to the community participate in. And in that conversation, based on feedback that we have gotten, just this year, we did our first youth community academy formatted after our, I guess, our adult community academy. So when we do get those suggestions, to the degree that we can, we will implement those programs and do those things. But we have not had like a, I'll call it a town hall or specific conversation about what some of those other programs and options could be or what they, you know, or yeah, what those other options and programs could be.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer?
I will ask my question offline, since I think we're running a little short on time. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I have a few questions that I'll ask offline, but if there's nothing else, I really appreciate the update.
Thank you.
And now we're going to move on to our final agenda item, which is the permanent supportive housing quarterly update, which council requested from staff. We have Director Carol Helen from Planning and Community Development. We have 30 minutes allotted for this. We have 20 minutes until the end of our committee meeting. Any possibility that we can push it 10 minutes? Any concerns there? Great. Hopefully, we can get through the conversation. Want to provide ample time to ask questions and have this update. So we'll push committee to 5:40 unless we get done early. Thank you.
Thank you. And good afternoon, Presiding Officer Salahuddin. And council members, tonight I'll be presenting the first of the quarterly updates that you requested as part of your Public Safety and Human Services Committee, the whole work program. And to date, I have status updates on two efforts that are currently underway related to the establishment of permanent supportive housing uses in Redmond. The first is the Health Through Housing project in Overlake, and the second is the Plymouth Housing project in downtown. So I will just go through the materials that were provided to you and then happy to take any questions you may have. So with respect to the Redmond Health Through Housing project, it's been going on a little bit longer, so I'll start there. The operational agreement, as you will recall, was signed by the City Council on December 5th in 2023. The only reason I start there is it not being a part of the first quarter of this year is just it really set the frame and the momentum moving forward for the project under the exit, under the code that was created by the City Council in the prior year. So the Community Advisory Group actually was constituted and staffed by Seraphie Allen and Brooke Buckingham, who are also here this evening to observe the meeting and answer questions if there are things that I can't respond to. And they completed their work in January, and you will recall that under the code, we are required to have a safety and security plan, a community relations plan, a program code of conduct, and also a parking management plan. Those documents were all addressed and robustly discussed by the Community Advisory Group. And ultimately, they were forwarded as the code requires to the police chief and to myself for final approval. Those documents have been approved and they were included in your pack of materials for information. The required parking management plan is actually a component of the permitting process, and that will be attached as a condition to the permit that requires and stipulates that no safe parking occur on the property or in the vicinity on the street. There was some good news related to Health Through Housing this month, where on April 2nd, over 100 individuals were in attendance at the ribbon cutting for our grand opening for the Health Through Housing project. It was really, with respect to the establishment of the use, and they actually did some tours of the spaces and greeted the folks that were there. People in attendance included the mayor. There were many of you who were in attendance. And there were also elected officials and staff from King County and Bellevue and Kirkland. And so it was a great milestone. Also, the good news is, too, that Tisa has been, Tisa Rutherford, our homelessness outreach coordinator, has already been coordinating with the Health Through Housing folks. And you'll remember from the operational agreement that there is an emphasis on local referrals, and she has already identified some folks that are living in a housing insecure way or without shelter at all in Redmond, who will be eligible and recommended for the project when it does open. The tentative opening is in May, and they'll start receiving tenants at that, tenants at that time. The initial tenant improvement permit is still in the process of being removed. They're actually going to remove the fencing that was around the site. If you all recall, that was installed largely for the refugee population that was there. They actually had children on the site as a component of that use. And they installed the fencing really to keep those children safe. They did have wheeled toys and things like that, and they didn't want them to kind of go missing from the site as a result. And, but that fencing is really not very residential in character, and it will be removed and replaced from, with some perimeter fencing that is more in character with our, one of our centers. They're redoing some minor rehabilitation of 17 units. They anticipate, the county anticipates staffing up kind of deliberately to create a community of individuals who are there and purposefully selected to, as because of their ties to Redmond, and also their suitability for the services that they'll have on site long term. Also, just next steps, so that we know what to expect, King County has to finalize building updates. You'll remember that this housing type is going to be emergency housing for a period of time. And the only difference in that definition is that emergency housing does not have kitchenettes. So there will be housing as they start to have more and more individuals on the site, individuals without kitchens and living there. And, but they will be in kind of phase two and phase three of their building permits, looking to essentially fit the entire 100 dwelling units that are anticipated for tenancy there with those kitchen components. The Salvation Army is the, was the selected group that will be providing services and managing the site. And they were involved in the CAG process, the Community Advisory Group process. And they will be, and continuing to engage with the folks that were involved in that process in order to create that kind of liaison process that we're looking for and community connections. Just to note that, you'll remember in the operational agreement, there is a mandate for the county to do six-month updates after they start receiving guests or tenants in their facility. And that will probably happen if everything's on track for late May. That'll probably happen in the November, December timeframe. So just, I'll pause there for a minute and just ask, are there any other questions about the Redmond Health Through Housing project before I move on to Plymouth?
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, Director Helen. Really appreciate the overview. And yeah, the opening, the grand opening, it was a wonderful celebration with lots of great partners. My question is about the Community Advisory Group because I understand a similar process will move forward with the other development we're going to discuss in a moment. I'm wondering, because there's been a lot of public interest in how neighbors are involved in help shaping how a new development moves into the neighborhood, I'm wondering if you could share a little bit more about what we, how that process went, how we, what we learned from doing it, and any learnings that we might carry forward into the next Community Advisory Group.
So actually, for that, I am going to ask if Seraphie and Brooke would like to come to the table. They were instrumental in constituting the Community Advisory Group and managing that exercise. One thing, one of my observations from that is the city was quite invested in there being a facilitator for that group so that everyone could participate, including city staff who were not part of the CAG itself, but who supported the CAG. And we did hire Linda Hall, who has quite a bit of experience in this area, to come in and facilitate that, the CAG interactions. And my sense is that that was a tremendous asset to the functioning of that group, and so much so that King County has now added the money for a facilitator into their program budget and expectations for future rolls out, rollouts of Health Through Housing facilities. But, go ahead.
So Deputy Director Allen, Planning and Community Development. I feel like, Carol, you did a great job answering part of that. Was there, I feel like there was an additional question, though, on the list you had as it related to the CAG?
Yeah, that was a great lesson learned. Again, just because we have a lot of community interest in, as we develop more permanent supportive housing throughout the city, how neighbors are involved in that. So I was, I was curious if there was more about how the experience went, lessons learned along the way. So a bunch of it just get covered. But if there's anything else you'd like to share, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, I think two additional notes, and then maybe Brooke, if there's anything I'm forgetting. But we had, also, we had our facilitator write-up and after-action report because this was the first time that Redmond was going through this. And so we have that and have shared that actually with Plymouth as well, so that they're aware of how it went. I would say that this is more on the logistical side, but we had a lot of meetings and we saw participation struggle, particularly at the end because we had small businesses, we had residents, and it's a lot of time commitment for them. And they got a lot of their questions, I think, answered early and then just I think, answered early, and then just wanted to make sure that those were continued into the documentation. And there's a lot of trust involved and knowing who to contact in the end. So really, this group was meant to help and did help, I think, build those relationships so in the future, should issues arise, then they know who to contact. And so I think maybe the thing for the future or something we've recommended is really making sure you have people who are able to put aside the time commitment because there is a lot of background materials and questions, and then maybe reducing and providing drafts ahead of time for that group to be able to review so there's not such a large time commitment. So I would say that's a logistical lesson learned for the future. Brooke, anything else to add? The other one thing I'll add to, it was really helpful to have, in addition to the immediate businesses and residents, some folks that were not the Salvation Army or King County that could provide some additional context. So we had some other nonprofits that provide similar services that could shape more of that fuller picture. And then we also had a lot of interest of hearing from other similar programs to help support the group in learning of what this is.
Wonderful. Well, I really appreciate that. Thank you. And again, this is the first time we've run such a group, and as we continue to see permanent supportive housing developed throughout our city, there's certainly going to be a lot that you all learned this first time applied in other spaces, so thanks so much.
Councilmember Noeva Camina?
Thank you. Thank you for how robust and going into quite detail on all of these plans and the various sections of them. I really appreciated the de-escalation best practices being listed. I think that it's great for everyone to read, so I'm glad that that's public because I can't imagine a situation where it wouldn't be useful, as well as when to call 911 because that is one of our services. That was wonderful. And also appreciating the inclusive language section in the security plan and what that covers. Question that I had was for the active threat plan. It stated that it's to work with Redmond Police Department. My question is, will that also include Redmond fire? Not knowing if that's best practice.
So can you share the active what part of the plan?
Active threat plan?
Oh, the active threat plan, whether that will include fire is your question. I'm not sure at this moment, but we can follow back up on that.
And then the second question to it was, when is that plan going to be complete? Because I believe that one was a TBD.
Okay, I can follow up on both those things.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council on this point? Council President Gritzer?
I guess to some of the questions around learnings, and there's been a lot of community interest in general around the process for developing all of these different plans that we have in regulations for every single permanent supportive housing project that happens in Redmond. Just curious if you can share a little bit more about what overall the development of these plans looked like, not the, maybe we have obviously the Community Advisory Group, and so that piece there, but some of the others. Was there a lot of back and forth? What were some of those learnings and takeaways as part of this work that we might carry forward?
So we could share, if you're interested in seeing the extensive work plan that our facilitator created, which had, at this date, we will do this item, and then at this date, we will review this item. And so that was how we started it, and I would say we had about six meetings overall, Brooke, if not six to eight meetings, some of them in person and some of them virtual. We found that in-person was a lot easier, of course, for discussions, but we were also trying to accommodate travel schedules, and we're also trying to do it over the holiday period, so there was a lot of need for that. So we went through and spent time and spent a meeting basically on each plan, and then each consecutive plan, you would come back and see, like, has this draft met the different items that you were going through? This was one of those lessons learned where I think prior, I think it's best to provide examples, and we'll have now examples, to be able to provide for future ones, to say, this is an example, and then really walk through what it looks like in the meeting with the group. Because what we found is people had a hard time conceptualizing when we first were saying, what is a safety plan look for you? And helping residents and businesses distinguish what should be in a security plan versus the community relations plan was a little bit difficult. So that was one of those lessons learned, I would say, is I think we'll provide drafts in the future for them to review and say, what's missing or what can we amend for language that's not already representing some of the concerns or questions you might have. Another lesson learned, I would say, too, is we had a couple, so there's a lot of development that's happening particularly in Overlake, too. So we had a lot of some of our popular developers that we know who are part of the group, and they recognized, they were like, wow, a lot of these items are similar items that we request of our tenants, and so we had some really, I would say, some of those aha moments or discussions, which we've heard is, what are requirements that you require in your developments of your tenants and requirements that we have of the tenants in this building? And then, should there be more or less in that for this particular site? Was, I would say, both a tension but also a good discussion between the group.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the clarification there because my understanding initially was that the Community Advisory Group would mostly work on community relations plan, but the fact that they were able to review all the plans and give input is, I think, a really important kind of aspect for us to see happening with future projects as well, and that's great to hear. I'll also note that just getting to tour the facility and see these places, that this is really a space where people are going to have homes, and it's great to be able to see that.
Thank you for those questions. We're at 5:27. I want to make sure that we get to Plymouth Housing. So council, if you have any other questions on the Health Through Housing, please feel free to email Director Helen, but back to you.
Thank you so much. So Plymouth Housing, there's a little bit less to report because of where it is and it's such infancy of the program. And I did want to just take a minute to talk a little bit about what got us here to the place that we are in right now, because it's probably important every time we have this conversation to remind the watching public that this was not a reactionary decision. It was based on a foundation of some very deliberate work that was undertaken by the City Council and actually prior councils before you. So I mean, it reaches back to, for instance, the mayor's commitment that predated our current mayor to address housing concerns and much of the foundation from the state legislature on their work on housing as well. But just by way of background, the land that we're talking about providing to Plymouth Housing for permanent supportive housing use is owned in the city's hands because it was originally owned by the King County Housing Authority, and we purchased that piece of property in order to provide the southern portion for access to light rail. That's ongoing. A portion of the piece of property is part of the easement that connected light rail all the way to downtown, and the remainder of the property was always anticipated to be affordable housing and for deeply affordable housing actually in transit-oriented development type context because of its proximity to light rail. We, all of us, the staff, completed a housing needs assessment back in 2020, which informed the development and approval by the City Council of the Housing Action Plan, which was done in March of 2021. One of the overarching objectives of that plan was to build more housing, diversify housing options, and target resources to less advantaged households. An aim of the Housing Action Plan is actually to increase housing development opportunities and housing access for all income levels, with particular attention to underserved communities, which was in very close alignment with a lot of the work that the state legislature did over the last couple of years in mandating the types of target residential and jobs we need to support and accommodate in Redmond, and then dividing those into the various levels of income to ensure that we are accommodating housing for everyone that needs it in our city. Just as a reminder, back in February of 2022, you passed, the council passed Ordinance Number 3074 AM, and that was following a very significant public engagement process on the development of a code that essentially described where permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelter could be located, and then also setting the requirements for those uses to be established. And some of those were the ones that we just discussed with respect to Health Through Housing, which included the operational agreements, the code of conduct, safety and security plan, and the such. The land that we are talking about for Plymouth Housing that is located at 16725 Cleveland Street is appropriately zoned for that use. It's where essentially permanent supportive uses are allowed under state law, are actually mandated under state law, to be allowed anywhere where hotel uses are allowed. And the buyer, basically, the Plymouth Housing is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to eliminate homelessness and address its causes by preserving and developing and operating safe, quality supportive housing and providing adults who are experiencing homelessness with opportunities to stabilize and improve their lives. And as a result, this was a good fit and partnership for that piece of property that Redmond had acquired back in 2019. I just also wanted to note, I know the question comes up now and again, that the city of Redmond is authorized by state statute to own and dispose of real property and may expend public funds to carry out the fundamental purposes of government, which includes essentially the transfer of property for the purposes of support to the, I think the language still says poor and infirm in the state law, but essentially to support our more vulnerable populations in the city of Redmond. And then that's just kind of by way of background, kind of the journey that the city has been on over the last, I mean, since I started back in 2019. And the culmination of that journey was then for the City Council to provide authorization to the mayor back on February 13th to transfer the city-owned property on Cleveland Street to Plymouth Housing. I am pleased to be able to announce that that transfer option agreement was executed earlier today, and so we are one step farther along the plan of giving Plymouth the kind of certainty that they need to invest in the development of the plans that will take a concept right now that is funded to a fully fleshed-out application that can then go through the development review process. We did create the city website, which includes FAQs. I'm hopeful that you're using those cards that we've prepared for you to pass out, and we will continue to offer them at the customer service desk here in council chambers for people to pick up, and we will continue to add to those FAQs as there is new information to report. The funding commitments have been maintained since we originally took this item for council action to consider donation of the property to Plymouth, and your packet materials in Attachment F do contain the information about that funding. I know there was some confusion potentially because there are different tranches of funds that actually are $3.2 million. There's three different essentially funding pools of money that are either $3.2 million or $3.2 million and change, so it's easy to understand how that might have been confusing. And I know Councilmember Fields, for instance, has been very interested in us making sure that we have documented essentially the nature of the funding and how that funding is being preserved, so I hope that Attachment F is helpful in that regard. The other, there was a timeline created as well for this project. It's very general right now. Development projects, this is very early in its infancy, and very early in its infancy, and as a result, that timeline may change, but you'll also notice that it's very generic. Is that, did you want to ask me a question?
I just wanted to call. It's 5:36, and I said that we had until 5:40. Is council okay with moving to 5:45? I want to respect our time but also want to make sure that we can ask questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'll hurry through the rest of it. We, oh, actually, one of the things that's of note, Plymouth Housing has begun community outreach efforts, and they've done this in tandem with the economic development staff from One Redmond, and so they did do community outreach events on April 3rd and 4th where they went business to business to business in the proximity of the Plymouth Housing project, which was their opportunity to give good information about the proposed project and get some direct feedback from those business owners, and start to develop a list of interested parties that we can request for participation in the Citizens Advisory Group when we look to constitute that later this year. Just a note that on the building updates, the mayor did authorize in late March, Plymouth Housing to have access to the site, coordinating with Emily, who does have a lease on the property right now, to essentially do site investigations and apply for permits, something our code requires, that the individual is either the owner or has authorization from the owner to apply. So that was executed back at the end of March, and Plymouth is in the process of evaluating site conditions and redesigning their project right now. Next steps are, we'll continue to coordinate with Plymouth and also other construction projects in the area. There's a lot going on in downtown, and they will, when the application materials are prepared, will apply for site plan entitlement for review by Development Services, at which point we'll kick in all the development review process, like notice of application and the opportunity for people to provide feedback on the development itself. So that's my, those are my remarks for the update for this quarter.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. I've got three questions. Hopefully, they'll be quick. So I've talked to a lot of people, a very wide range of people on this project, and if there's any former councilmembers listening, I've exceeded my 10 hours this week quite a bit, so. And it was a very wide range of people, people who own businesses, people who I know socially through the tennis club, the coffee shop, people I used to work for 30 years ago have all asked me questions about this, and I can't really answer their questions. So I'm hoping that we can tonight. And in general, the people that I've talked to, without exception, agree with the things that you said in the beginning about the intent of the funding and the responsibility of the city in finding people who are challenged for affordable housing, and I don't think you're going to get a whole lot of disagreement on that out in our community. So three questions, and you mentioned, I think it was Item F. So when I looked at that summary that you provided, it does exceed the Kenmore Housing by about $3.2 million if you include the federal loan. On one side, it shows $1 million; on the other side, it shows TBD. If I add $1 million, just to equalize it, it exceeds, the Redmond funding exceeds by $3.2 million. So that's the first question, and that was a question that people asked. Is it necessary to have more for this project when it's in Redmond than it was expected to need when it was in Kenmore?
Sure, I'm happy to answer that question, and thank you. So the biggest issue is the difference in the land cost, and that has to be included in the, essentially, the funding stack is the cost of the land. It was, the land in Kenmore was roughly $1.9 million, and the land in Redmond, when we purchased it in 2019 as a larger parcel, was $5.5 million. So therein lies the difference that you see.
So excluding the land, the funding is equal?
Excluding the land, the funding is much closer to equal. What we also believe and what is occurring as part of the site investigation that Plymouth is currently conducting is... is currently conducting is that the site in Redmond will be a bit more difficult to develop because it is so close to transit or so close to light rail, and because of the configuration of the site is longer and narrower. And they had already expended approximately $1 million on the project work in Kenmore, so that is money that they will not receive back. So the money that is listed here is all money that they believe is going to be necessary and that they will need actually more money, but they are committed to going to their donors and others to look for any additional funds that might be necessary.
And do we know what the current estimate of the project is?
We do not have that right now because, one, is they are needed to complete their site investigation and needed to essentially develop their conceptual design more fully based on those site investigations. And I believe that the representatives from Plymouth told me, once they get those conceptual designs complete, they will have what they need to do, a project estimate, which they thought would be available in the next couple of months.
Okay, and I'm trying to be sensitive to the time, so I've got two more questions quickly, hopefully. Is there a lease, current lease on this property that is yet to be resolved?
There is a current lease on this property for construction, and we are working with the property owner, the adjacent property owner that is using it for construction purposes. And they are being very cooperative, and by all accounts, we will, I do not believe we will have any problem resolving those leases so that they can essentially continue to get their construction done, and then they will release their obligation for the last year.
Thank you. And then the last question. So there's a lot of concern about who will be in Redmond in this facility. And we can call those people NIMBs, we can call them fear mongers, we can call them whatever you want. But the reality is, majority of them are expressing their fear. And I don't think that we, as a city, value, when people express fear, that we go, oh, you know, you're bad for feeling fear. I don't think that's something that we do in the city. But in fact, that's how it's coming across, either through other members of the community. And what we're denying, not we, but what's being denied in their minds, is they have legitimate concerns and legitimate fears about safety and how this will unfold. What I've made to the council way back in February was the recommendation that we actually deal with this straight on. Why not just address the elephant in the room and have public hearings and have listening sessions so that we can listen to those fears openly, and we can answer why those fears may not be something that they need to be fearful of? Or reassure them that the work that Deputy Director Allen described on the Silver Cloud facility, that in fact, that work will also be done, and they will have a voice, and they will have the time and do all of that work that was done then. Now, we set it up, this is my opinion, you can throw rocks at me, council members, if you want, but we set it up to create this fear. We did not, we did not take the time that we should have taken to let our community know what in the world we were doing, and why, and how it would unfold. And so we helped create this problem, we helped create this dialogue in the city that is very divisive. I would like to see the council and the city take steps to resolve that, and trust our community, and listen to our community, and understand that they have the same compassion that we do, but they also have to live here, and they don't want us to misstep, or do the wrong thing, or create an unsafe environment. So that's what I'm asking. Would the Planning Department support that, if the council could come to terms with that? That's my question. You don't need to answer the rest of it.
So there is, even on the timeline, there is described the community outreach that will happen. There is no hearing that is required. I'm just, no, I would love to finish before I said that, before. There is not a hearing required, and so we, as staff members, will not bring forward something that is not, that is outside the scope of the process that was created under the ordinance that you adopted and under the rules that we administer. We administer the rules. So if, I think your question is more aimed at your council colleagues about how they would like to proceed, and in any instance, when we are asked to do something by the city council, the Planning Department supports those requests.
That was, in fact, my question. Would you support if the council came to terms with that? That was the very specific question, and I think you answered yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I don't know of a time when we've not supported something that the council has asked.
Director Helen, there was no suggestion that you wouldn't. I just wanted it to be clear that you would.
Want to be cognizant of time as well and make sure that we can get some questions asked. I'm not sure if you had.
I just wanted to add that we put the, thank you for whoever put the timeline up, but Councilmember Fields, as you'll note, that in late 2024 is when the Community Advisory Group is scheduled to kick off. And then what will be nice, as compared to the last round, is there will be quite a bit of time prior to the development opening to be able to engage with this group in that way. So as you and Director Helen mentioned, that doesn't exclude other kind of opportunities the council would like to pursue, but there is a process for community engagement that we've done in the past that we will continue to engage in.
Thank you. I saw Councilmember Stewart next.
Excuse me, I was not next. I haven't raised my hand yet. I thought you were just asking if I was the one who put it on the screen, and the answer is yes.
Sorry about that. Council President Kritzer?
Thank you so much. Yeah, I think, from what I've heard from the council, especially during our council retreat, as well as follow-up discussions on this, I think a majority of council is really interested in engaging with the community, and of course, would love to hear from my colleagues on this. I know council leadership is in discussion with our Communications Department on scheduling some community conversations where we can be out, doing either town hall style or even round tables. Councilmember Fields, you may remember that when we were in our retreat, we discussed this idea, and council leadership has been following up on it and working to get that scheduled. So for the community to listen, as well as everyone else, just wanted to highlight that that is something that we're working on, on a variety of issues, since, from what I have heard from Mark, from my colleagues on the council, is that everyone is really interested in being able to have the community engage. I really appreciate this timeline. And one question I have on it, though, is that I think there's some pieces that if you were looking at it, it might not be super clear, when is your moment to comment, or when is your moment to jump in? So I wonder if there's a piece to it, so for example, Spring 2024, there's the permit application preparation, and I know as part of that permit process, there will be an ability for the public to comment. So I think if there are any places in this timeline where we can make it really clear, especially since, I think the Community Advisory Group will be a wonderful function for us to be able to get select community leaders and different voices, so that way we're really getting the input on how this gets planned. But we also want to be able to have something that we can get a bigger, broader public or just access for any person that wants to share in there. And so I would love to see on this timeline just some of those kind of opportunities called out, as well as the opportunity for people to come and give public comment every other week at our business meetings, just to let people know, since, you know, we've been able to hear two-plus hours of public comment every other week since we made this decision, and have gotten to hear a lot of feedback from our community, and expect to continue that and continue that dialogue so that we can have that as part of what we do on this. So I think it'd be great if we could have that be clear. One idea that was kicked to me by a community member was also, as we developed this timeline out, that potentially we could make a sign of it and put it up in City Hall, so that way it's super clear as people are coming in to see our meetings, they can read the timeline. Because I think just having it be really easily accessible for people about those places, and having maybe a star where they're going to have the opportunity to engage would be really helpful, because I know that's been a big concern and a concern for all of us to make sure that the community can have their voices heard. And by that, I mean the diversity of perspectives on this topic.
We will certainly talk about, to the communications folks, about whether there's an easy way for us to add that to this and some of the other suggestions that you made. In addition, we will augment the FAQs about when there are comment opportunities and how we can, you can subscribe to permit information as well, so that might be an opportunity for people to follow. There's a lot of subscription opportunities that actually would keep people informed about when those comment opportunities come up.
Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thank you. Just real quick, through this conversation, just as Council President Kritzer and I were on the Redmond Senior and Community Center Advisory Board meetings to keep that process continuing, I think it would be a good opportunity for councilmember to volunteer to be on the advisory committee for this as well, if that's an opportunity that we could open up to council.
Gotcha. Go ahead.
We can follow up on that one. We did consider that in the previous. I also want to reference that power dynamic sometimes with having a council member, and that was one of the discussions with Health Through Housing, was trying to have it be a little bit more of a shared space that's focused on those businesses or communities rather than a council, even though it is very nice to have the council member, we also want to make sure that they can feel like they're able to engage with each other.
I will say, for the Senior and Community Center conversations, having it be virtual made that power dynamic really equal. So if that's an opportunity, I would say it was really well-received by the rest of the seniors in that group, and I think it's a good opportunity here if it can happen.
We also, just as a point of reference, we had you put together, the council put together, a term sheet with respect to the operational agreement, and we will continue to use those as a starting point. So as Seraphine noted, we will have the documents that have been adopted by Health Through Housing in Overlake as a starting point, and then also that term sheet that council originally adopted as a starting point for the operational agreement as well.
We're a little bit past time on this really important discussion. I just wanted to ask any other questions from council at this time? Yep, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you so much. By way of this being a touch point with the community, I know a lot of folks have just gotten involved in the conversation or are starting to hear from their neighbors and have some questions. I just want to encourage the community, first of all, to say thank you. We've had so much robust feedback on this, and in case you missed the really robust history that Director Helen shared, this is a story that goes back several years to the origin story, and all of that really robust public feedback that has informed the council direction for the Planning Department. So again, all the work that the council has directed. So thank you for everyone who's continuing to use all of the available tools to check in with us. I also really appreciated the timeline and echo the feedback from President Kritzer. I have the same remark, just if we could be even more explicit about when are folks' opportunities to chime in, and how, and what. We also have those really cool, that technology we saw a report on just a couple weeks ago on the storyboard option. So I don't know if that's something that IT could help with or something, but anything we can do to just make it more clear for folks. And lastly, to just call out, I think there's a lot of interest right now and urgency to be able to see something, the next step happening, or to influence the next step that's happening. And the steps right now are pretty technical in nature, as was described by the planning team, so there's not a lot of news just yet, but following this timeline, we'll be able to follow along with where those moments are. So really just appreciate the public, and certainly the planning staff for all their wonderful work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council President Kritzer?
Thank you. I thought of, just one other comment that I wanted to add. I think, you know, one other piece that we as a council, and hopefully in collaboration with our staff, can work on is just around, just continuing to have more easily understandable content about permanent supportive housing, just kind of explaining a little bit more to, you know, I think a lot of the questions we get of what types of people and experiences are, will people be bringing, who will be served by this type of housing? You know, why do we see this need? Because we do have our FAQ site, but I think continuing, and as a council even, thinking through what kinds of tools we may need to best engage with the public in a way that's really accessible, because sometimes reading a long government page while it is accurate is not particularly easy for people to understand. So I think that's just something that I put on our work plan, and I know that I personally take as something, as a follow-up step on this, is just to make sure that we're continuing to bring our community along by sharing about this, and sharing about what the experiences and successes are of our first permanent supportive housing site, or not first, but of Health Through Housing, since we actually have some others too. Thanks.
Well, thank you all. We've reached the end of today's agenda. If there are any other questions, please reach out to the planning team. Now, is there anything else for the good of the order? Great, thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you.